Always the trick. Okay, I am ready now. Erica, are we ready at the board end?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Benton County Board of Commissioners Work Session, or Information Sharing Session of the Month. And I'm Zan O'Gru, Chair.
And I'm Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
I'm Maloon, Commissioner.
Good morning, Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Good morning, Teresa, Board Staff.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Jeff Manorsal, Sheriff.
Sorry, didn't mean to talk over the sheriff. Kate Porsha, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
And Catherine Duval, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
I'm Jerry Storey, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
Thank you all. And we have Erica Myle, Board Recorder, with us as well. We are this morning, sorry, I'm a little bit out of it. I have to acknowledge I have a head cold. And so if I'm spacey, that's why. We, Benton County is on the historic lands for the Kalakhea peoples and Alsee peoples. And also was traditionally used by the Krikatah peoples as well. And wanted to acknowledge that and the fact that we have descendants of the Alsee and the Kalakhea peoples with us in the tribes, Confederate tribes of Grand Ronde and Solet. And we seek to honor their stewardship of the land and decisions that we make here in Benton County. I have no further announcements. Are there any others? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to the review and approval of the agenda. We do have a couple of surprises, as Commissioner Maloon put it today. We have an executive session that we will add under other, with respect to labor negotiations, under ORS 192.6602D. And we will also, following that, have an executive session with respect to real estate under ORS 192.6602E. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, then we will consider it approved and move on into our work session. Our first item is a report from the Economic Development Office on the new eLife program. Welcome, Jerry and Catherine. Kate.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We're excited to give you an update on our electric bicycle instant rebate program that is new here in Benton County. And we did our introductions earlier, so I thought we'd just jump right in. Just as a quick overview, so our office received a $60,000 grant from Pacific Power under their electric mobility grant program. And our concept with these funds was to find a way to both combine our economic development objectives, to move money into our local economy, and also to find ways to expand this new technology, which is electric bicycles, to more people in Benton County. And so what we did is we crafted one of the first electric bicycle instant rebate programs that, at least we know of, in the area. And just a brief overview, what we've done is we, Catherine and I reached out to all of the bike shops in the county, and we identified those that both do electric bicycle sales and repair. And those are Corvallis Electric Bicycles, Peak Sports, Bike and Hike, and Corvallis Bike Recovery. And we created a system where our office had took applications from individuals who met just a brief list of qualifications, those being part of a family that makes 80% of the annual median income for the area or less, so lower-income individuals. They also need to reside within the Pacific Power service territory, be residential Pacific Power customers, and also be at least 18 years of age. We created a simple application process, and we received 60 applicants during our initial application window. And of those 60 applicants, we issued 18 of these instant rebates. And the way that it works is those folks with instant rebates can shop for electric bicycles at one of the participating bicycle retailers. And when they choose to make a purchase, up to $1,200 is deducted from the price of the electric bicycle, including helmet, bike locks, and a safety vest, and lights, if needed. That $1,200 is reduced at the time of sale. So this is a little bit different from what you might see in some of the state rebate programs that we're used to seeing, where you've got to make a purchase and then you've got to apply for reimbursement. We worked and we knew that, like, $1,200 is a lot of money and that folks may not have that to be able to wait for reimbursement. So we worked internally to build trust with the local bike shops and create mechanisms so that we could award these instant rebates. So we've had 18 of the rebates issued, and of those, we've had 10 sold to date. It's a little bit slower than we might see during pre-COVID times. I think what we saw is that the demand for electric bicycles has been steadily increasing even pre-COVID. And then once the pandemic hit, there has been significant demand for electric bicycles. So it's just hard to get enough electric bicycles kind of within the price point of what folks are looking for in stock here in our local bike shops. We've started to do a little bit of surveying of individuals to learn more about how this program is impacting them. And I'll turn it over to Catherine to give us just a quick recap of what we're hearing so far from people.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Kirby. We are partnering with the Council of Governments, the Oregon County West Council of Governments. Our partners there are doing the survey work for this program. And the participants who have had their bikes for less than three months have taken the survey. And we're hoping to do a follow-up about every three months to see how they're adjusting and how their transportation patterns are changing. And so far, the results that we've had are really great. People are very enthusiastic about the program. A lot of people report using their bikes more rather than car travel, which was one of, you know, our main objectives of the program, so we're excited about that. And people just report also feeling better in general, having better health, having more energy, just being able to get more exercise. They feel their strength's going up, which was kind of an unexpected but exciting impact that we're seeing so far. And we even had one participant so far who said that they were able to give up an old car of theirs because they were using it for commuting, and now they can use the bike. So it's very exciting, and I think one of the things that, one of the only downsides that we've heard so far is just that there are still some areas throughout the city or throughout the county that are kind of tricky to navigate on a bike. And so people are finding those as they're out and about more. But overall, it's been, we've heard really great things.
Absolutely. And so now we'd like to share with you a video. So there might be a little bit of fumbling as we bring this up, but we worked with Pacific Power to put together a video that highlights some of the programs that were funded under this electric mobility grant program. And yeah, we'd like to share that with you now. So when I get to go ahead, I'll go ahead and get things going here.
Jerry, this is Erica. You should be ready to proceed.
Across our region, change is underway. Communities are plugging into the benefits of electric mobility, and Pacific Power is partnering with them to invest in this future today.
When someone has the opportunity to get in an electric car or an electric bus or an electric bike for the first time, we see so much excitement and joy.
I think it's a natural progression from electric vehicles that we're seeing in other areas.
It's healthier for people, not just physically, but for the community as a whole, to get everyone using all of these different modes of transportation.
Electric mobility really offers a layer of independence for a lot of the communities
Agriculture producers, rural small businesses, a lot of times it's around energy efficiency or technology. And so we'll test that technology out, bring it out, see how it works through areas.
A lot of these technologies are early in the adoption curve and cost a significant amount for communities. And so the programs that we provide help get that cost down.
Some people, you know, they just want to stay with the regular old tractor, no new change, no new technology. But I really don't feel that way.
My first experience operating an electric tractor, it was almost a surprise. The torque of the motor is available to you immediately. The hardest thing to get used to is the fact that it doesn't make any noise.
For, you know, a small farm, they don't have to worry about having it on site. People can simply just flood these tractors into a welding outlet, a 220 source. So it makes it really easy for them.
Pacific Car has been supporting a number of electric bus initiatives over the last few years.
Young lungs are really important to protect. And in diesel buses, the emissions inside the bus are actually considerably worse than outside of the bus. Electric buses are able to operate more quietly and more efficiently. And so it's really important to protect our next generation and help them experience some of the benefits of electrification.
I grew up in Corvallis, and I think that's the thing that hopefully keeps me here, is high quality of life, it's easy to walk, it's easy to bike around.
Our new bike instant rebate program is geared towards lower-income individuals, and our hope is that it encourages people to bike further and more often than they might otherwise on a regular bike.
We're a very bike-friendly community, and so when we were trying to think of a program that would have potentially a large impact, we thought this was a way to give people an alternative form of transportation that didn't tie them to their cars. We also thought it as an opportunity to support the local bike shops as well as to help some people have more economic freedom, economic mobility.
A lot of these communities, when they're applying for grants, are putting their own project proposals together, they're putting their own ideas up paper, they're creating their own partnerships and work here just as a partner to give to that vision that they've already created.
In order for any technology to succeed, it needs to just be better, better performing, less expensive, better for the environment. Those all come together with electric technology.
Into the future, 10, 20, 30 years down the road, we really want to see our electric transportation be connected with our renewable energy. And that is our way to get to this different future of electrification.
We're hoping that this is a launching pad, and we really appreciate that Pacific Car saw the opportunity for this to be something even exciting and ongoing, and we can just
All right. I know that that was a bit choppy, so if I can, what I'll do is I'll put a link to the video in the chat, and it's worth watching at some point because I think the production quality was pretty awesome. But I think, like, the thing that we're trying to emphasize with this program is that, you know, we're trying to be new, we're out there, it's like helping people explore this new technology. We're going to track results as we get them and, you know, potentially adapt the program as needed moving forward. And so it's exciting to be able to try something new like this, and we'd love to answer any questions that you may have right now.
Thank you. It's inspiring. Pat.
Yeah, this is great. I appreciate the video. And your group is, I think, to be congratulated in designing the program in the first place. It's a lot easier if somebody else has gone first, and you can use their experience and tweak it a little bit and look like you're a genius. But going first, this just seems well-designed and kind of reminds me of a year and a half ago, and getting money out to local businesses. And, you know, that was, again, a well-designed program. This fits right in with one of my themes of being able to get around our region without a car. And this is a nice little addition to that efforts. And you can be assured I'll keep working on more paths and see what we can do about some of those, which is where it's just hard to, it's built for cars and not so much for walking or biking. So congratulations on this. And I wouldn't even, I guess I didn't know you about the survey and the follow-up, and that's, that's a nice piece of the program. So looking forward to more, more feedback on how it's working. Hopefully, they'll unload some of those shipping containers and find some electric bikes to send our way.
Nancy. Hello, and thank you for bringing this to us today. It's exciting, and congrats on the grants, and thank you for all the work that you've done for this program. Do you think that we're going to be seeing any electric tractors sometime in the near
Catherine, do you want to jump in? Have we heard anything about electric tractors coming over?
Sure, yeah. My understanding is that that is also very much a pilot project. And so I think there's a few partnerships involved in that, in that project in Eastern Oregon, so we'll see how it goes. But I have heard rumblings about that from other people in our rural areas here who are in agriculture, that they're looking at, you know, alternatives to the traditional engines. So we will see. We'll let you know if we hear anything.
Awesome. Thank you.
There is a local company called Cars &amp; Tools, based just north of town here, that works on small-scale electric tractors. And they've been piloting some electric tractors with some of the local businesses as well. I'm aware of at least one of our local nurseries that's using some of the equipment. So it's not national scale or international production yet, but yes, there's a lot going Joe.
Good morning again, and Jerry and Catherine, thanks for your updates. Clarification regarding the financial aspects of the program. What I understood is that there was an $80,000 grant or $60,000 grant, and we've awarded 18 of those. So it appears that there's still money on the table, and how will the rest of that money be distributed?
We have $60,000 in the grant, and we have enough to push out 50 total rebates. And so we've issued 10 so far. So we, our plan is first, we'll likely put together a round two of some type to try to bring more people into the application, into the process in general. But we're kind of being strategic about how that might look, only because we don't want to send a bunch of people lose buying e-bikes if there's not supply to be ready for them. So we're trying to be strategic about round two. We're on a glide path, though, where we will not, I don't think we're going to hit 50 e-bike rebates by next June, when the grant funds need to be spent. So we will engage Pacific Power to see if there is an opportunity for an extension of those funds. There may be, there may not be. And so outside of that, we'll try to be as efficient as we can to spin those funds, allow folks within the program to use those funds for e-bikes up until that time.
Thank you for that question, Joe, and for the timeline, Jerry. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you. It's an exciting program, and I'm looking forward, as this is at, to seeing those containers arrive with more e-bikes to make them available. Okay, our next item is also from you all on CPaaS. And I'm sure you will explain to us fully of what CPaaS is and how we can welcome it into Benton County.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll start off with that, and Kate here as well, to answer any questions. So CPaaS stands for Commercial Property Assist Clean Energy. And it is a financing program that allows commercial property owners to secure financing for energy upgrades and renewable energy installations. And in Portland, they also do seismic retrofits as part of this program. And there's absolutely no public money involved. It's an agreement between the property owner and the financing agency, whomever that is, and the administrator of the CPaaS program. And right now, there's only one CPaaS program in Oregon, and that's up in the Multnomah County area. It's a partnership between the City of Portland and Multnomah County, and it covers only that area. So the only projects that can be done using the CPaaS financing mechanism are in that spot. And one of the reasons that it's such a, it's so efficient that we were looking into this is because it essentially works like a local improvement district, so that the property owner can secure funding. And this goes from property owner to property owner. So if the building is sold, that funding goes with them, and it allows them to pay back these projects over a 20- to 30-year period. And they have to be, typically for renewable energy and energy efficiency, there needs to be a certain amount of payback in order for them to be viable investments. And so the idea essentially being that they will get that money back in the long term. And we originally were asked by our local climate groups and by the Climate Action Advisory Board through the City of Corvallis to look into setting up a local program here, either in City Corvallis or Benton County, which is how they do it in some states. But once we started looking more into this, we decided, and speaking with our partners in Portland, we all came to the conclusion that it would be much more efficient to have a statewide program rather than multiple local programs, especially because there are other jurisdictions in the state that are talking about this. So it's kind of, we're at a point where it was going to go maybe one way or the other with many local programs, or we could all put our effort behind this statewide program. So we decided that was the best way to do it. And there's a few reasons. We think that it'll be, it'll open us up for more financing opportunities. Also, in a state like Oregon, where we have some really small rural counties, it would be hard for them to, you know, they might have a project that comes along every 10 years or something that applies for a CPaaS program, and so having it at a statewide level allows more people to get involved and use the program. And it's just easier, it's less cost for everyone if there's one administrator. So we are in the process of just getting support, speaking with other counties and other cities. We have, City of Salem is interested in this. We have had great support from our partners up in the Portland area. We know also there's a lot of interest over in the Bend and Deschutes County areas as well. And so we're hoping that if we can get support from, from you all, that this will kind of lend itself to just furthering this process along and setting the conversation along. And Kate, did I jump in if I missed anything?
I think you, I think you did great. I think the only thing I'd add that maybe is a little bit exciting is, you know, the City of Corvallis, City Council signed on and put their support behind this. And as county commissioners, you guys would be second in the state. So we're kind of blazing a trail here with this support and basically strengthening this consortium. You know, so it's early days, but we're really just trying to gain the support from political bodies to say, yes, we think this is a good idea. We're going to then take that support as we continue to do this work and see if we can't stand this up statewide to benefit all of our communities.
Thank you, Kate and Catherine. And so as I understand it, at this point, you're, it's just a sign on, you're looking for, for us, for us, in order to continue the momentum for a statewide CPaaS program. Can you tell me that statewide program, would it be operated out of Multnomah in Portland or out of business Oregon? Or do we know yet what that would look like?
That's kind of the big question right now, is where, who the administrator would be and where it would be operated out of there. We don't believe it could be operated out of Multnomah County because they can only, they could, they can only operate their program. That's what we've heard so far. That's what we've heard so far, just because of how their jurisdiction works. But we are looking at maybe, it could be a state agency, it could even be a nonprofit or a community development finance institution. So there's a lot of different options.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense if it's something like one of the community development finance institutions or some other energy efficiency operation.
Kate, if I could? Commissioner, thank you. I was going to add, I know Joe Kirby, your administrator is Kirby, early on, we had a meeting with your fine assessor's office, because as you, you may have heard, the word CPaaS includes property assess, as in a property assessment. But I wanted to assure you as a county and folks that have a property tax assessor, Oregon has actually shifted away from the property assessment model to, as Catherine said, more of an LID structure. So I just wanted to sort of let you know, well, one, while our meeting with the assessor went great and they supported it when it was under this model, that old model, it's actually pivoted to where it's no longer a property assessment and it's more of an LID structure. So we think, of course, for, for Benton County, but also the other counties across the state, this will be a bit of a relief. It means that the assessors themselves aren't responsible for, for foreclosure if that ever came to pass. So it's a bit of a cleaner structure, and I think Oregon is one of firsts at trying this sort of LID structure. So I just wanted to assure you all on that point.
So we're learning from the experience of others. I think that's an excellent thing. I have been very excited about this program from the first it came up. So I'm strongly in support of moving forward with a letter of support so that we can continue to develop this program on a statewide level. It would be great to introduce additional cash into the system for clean energy and energy efficiency, for seismic retrofits.
Nancy?
Well, I remember when this was first added to the SOP, the Strategic Operating Plan in Corvallis, and it was exciting then. So I think it's pretty awesome to see it moving forward. Thank you for your work on this. Not only is it exciting, I mean, it literally checks the box, the boxes for our focus areas and vision, you know, the prosperous economy, environment and natural resources. And then I also like to carry, keep with me my list of things I ran on for office to remind myself, and this checks a lot of those boxes, too. So I very much support this. Thank you.
Pat, go.
Yeah, my questions have pretty well been answered. I was wondering if there was an administrator already or if it was to be arranged. So I look forward to more information on that. And I, in my notes had, I thought this had something to do, that Portland had had a program, and you answered that question. And they're the only ones in the state that are currently active. But I, I like the statewide approach that, so everybody's kind of, has the same rules, you know what the rules are. And I think that's a much more efficient way to proceed and piecemeal, because it, it sounds like it should be a pretty easy sell to other jurisdictions once, especially once you get a few more details, what's involved. Just answering the question about, no, the local assessor, that's not more work for them. That's always a good, a good thing to have. So it sounds like, are we ready for a motion on this?
Certainly.
I am ready. I look to support the efforts of the Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office in pre-state statewide CPaaS program.
Back in.
All the favorably signify with a aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you. And may you have good fortune in rounding up more support around the state.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, commissioners. Appreciate it.
And keep us posted on, on how this is proceeding.
Thank you. Okay. Kate and Catherine, one question for you. Oops, it looks like Catherine, I mean Kate left. Catherine, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Have you thought about going to the Association of Oregon Counties to ask them for support?
We haven't yet, but we, we will probably speak with them and with the lead Oregon cities just to garner more support. We have had, we don't have a huge number of other jurisdictions right now who are actively having this conversation. I think that's just because when we started, it was so early on. But now that we're getting more momentum, we're interested in going to them and seeing if we can get more counties and cities involved.
I think that that would be a good place to do that and to share the information. And the regular steering committee meetings are a place to share the basic program information and concept and then take it on up the chain there for support, the association overall. Mallory Roberts, I think is the best point person there in terms of the, their committee structure. So be happy to help put you in touch if you'd like to go that route.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, that sounds like a good suggestion.
Okay. Thanks.
And, and along those lines, the AOC's annual conference is in Eugene, middle of November. And so that would probably be a good place to introduce this concept to most every, most every county in the state would be represented at that meeting.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to the information sharing portion of our agenda. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Mullen?
I can't think of anything off the top here. Oh, I got in touch with Gary Starkoff on the evacuation route from Oak Creek area into OSU Sheep Farm, and that's plugging along. Part of the reason for wanting to get kind of an update is I want to keep the Corvallis Rural Fire District Board informed that this, this project is moving forward and that they have definitely agreed to help fund the project. So it seemed like a good idea to keep them informed. And what Gary said was, thought that it would just go out to bid and work on next summer, hopefully in time for fire season. So that seemed like a good timeline. And Public Works has a lot of significant projects in the queue, but Gary thought this could be, could be one of them. Oh, that's what I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Nancy?
Sure. I actually thought quite a bit. I was like, I have to come up with something because I often don't have anything. So number one, don't forget to vote November 2nd. If you live in the city of Corvallis, on your ballot there are measures 2131, 2132, and 2133. These are all part of the city charter amendment initiative. I was actually on the city council when we started that work. I endorsed all those measures and I voted yes on all those measures. If you live in Ward 8 in Corvallis, don't forget to vote for your city council candidate. And then the other things on the ballot, North Albany Rural Fire Protection District and McDonald's Forest Estates Road District. And you can find the voter's pamphlet on our website, of course. All right, let's see, what else? November 6th is the Corvallis Spirits Festival at Forest Spirits Distillery. It's a fundraiser that is a fun time and it benefits local veterans organizations. I have my ticket. I'm going. My sister and I are going to go have a fun time. Two years ago, when they first put this on, fun fact, they had a pie eating contest for all of the city managers in Corvallis, Benton County. And I am proud to say that Mark Shepherd, who was my city manager at the time, won that contest, and I was just super excited that he showed up and represented for the city of Corvallis. So I don't know if there's going to be a pie eating contest this time around, but it's always a good time.
It sounds like Sharon might have something to say about that, and I think Pat does, too.
Completely different topic, so go ahead and finish up.
I will just simply say there will be a pie eating competition again this year. I will say nothing more.
Interesting. Okay, well, I will be there to see what happens. Let's see, what else? I had lunch with District Attorney Haroldson last week, just to kind of catch up and see how things are going. And I'll also be having lunch with Gabe Shepherd, Ward 4 city councillor. And I'm just kind of making the rounds. Yeah, and that's all I have. Thank you.
You had something to add?
Yeah. Fair Group is having a series of informational meetings this week on improvements to the Fair Grounds facilities. There was a, and they're basically all virtual this week. They had a meeting with potential exhibit hall folks yesterday afternoon. This evening, the Fair Foundation is getting a virtual presentation from architects firm from 6:00 to 7:00, and then quarterly, I think, Fair Foundation meeting in person immediately after that. And Betty, Betty and I are planning on attending that. And then be a couple more presentations, at least one more this week with stakeholders for the equestrian folks. Probably a discussion of doing a covered, covered arena at the Fair Grounds to replace the current convertible. It's an exhibit hall. No, it's a horse arena, which has really limited exhibit hall part of that, that effort. And then November 15th, the Fair Board meets for their annual retreat and will get, go over some of the same information. So now I think I'm finished.
Thanks. Okay, that's a good, good summary of all the things going on at the fair, in the fairgrounds. I am not as connected as I was when I was pleased on, and I appreciate the update. I know that one of the things that's happening tonight at that Fair Foundation meeting is that they will be hearing a JACIT presentation from Nick Kirk. And Pat will be the commissioner on deck for that. So I hope it's a enjoyable and informative discussion about the justice system improvement program with members of the Fair Foundation. I have a handful of things to mention to you all. I have spoken recently with Andy Smith from the Association of Oregon Counties. He wanted to thank us for our sign-on to the letter of requesting state funding for additional mediation to prevent evictions around the state. He's very grateful for that. He also wanted to update me briefly on the fact that the Contracted Water Specialist is joining the AOC staff as of this coming Monday. That's Harmony Burright, former employee of Oregon Water Resources Department. And Dee and Andy will likely be reaching out to Joe and to Gary Starkoff to set up a date to speak to staff about our plans, just to have that understanding of where we're going, whether or not they can support any of our needs. Lastly, on the AOC front, I was in a meeting about two weeks ago now with AOC staff and a representative from an opportunity zone financer. And as you may know, both downtown Corvallis and south Corvallis are designated opportunity zones under the IRS, a recent law that was passed with the last tax reform. And we, the opportunity zone funding has been really slow to roll out anywhere in Oregon. It's challenging. Mostly, some of these fund managers are looking for really big projects. So this particular opportunity zone manager was thinking about bundling projects focused on low-income and workforce housing. But their requirements are such that they want to have projects that are, they were fully financed projects. They would want to park their money in this kind of development, especially with tax advantage additionally by things like the low-income housing tax credit. But they want to have projects that are shovel-ready and that can get going in April of '23. And as you all know, it's pretty difficult to have projects at that point and not have financing in hand already. So it's kind of a very narrow needle to thread. Conversations with our AOC staff, they say that they're also speaking to some other opportunity zone financiers that operate in the area, and there may be other opportunities. So I'm still hoping that we might find some funds that could be invested either in downtown Corvallis or in south Corvallis and take advantage of that opportunity zone tax benefit and develop housing at the same time. Doesn't have to be a housing development. There are other types of eligible projects, but that's what is most top of mind here. I also wanted to mention that I, with my Benton Community Foundation board member hat on, was able to do a little bit of a field tour on Friday out in Paloma and out here way back from Kings Valley. We visited the Kings Valley Charter School, talked about some of the construction projects they have on deck and their hopes and aspirations for conservation land that's adjacent to them with the Kings Valley Trust. So then we also visited in Paloma with Strengthening Rural Families and with the Paloma Services Consortium and about their needs for space and facilities. So there's quite a bit of need in parts of Benton County. I know that there's also need in Monroe, for instance, for the service center down there. There are lots of smaller projects in that, anywhere a hundred thousand to $300,000 range to promote, to support community services hubs, so to speak. So that's something that I think we'll hear more about, especially as we start to talk more about what the American Rescue Plan Act dollars might look like as they roll forward over the next two or three years. And on that note, we've also received a request for a meeting from a group of Corvallis-based, primarily Corvallis-based nonprofits focusing on primarily Corvallis-based nonprofits focusing on young children, to meet with us about how we're planning to allocate those ARCA dollars. You all saw that, as I see it, editorial that came out last week, over Bettina Schumpf's signature, and this is follow-up to that. And what our next steps are going to be on that front is to have some of those groups meet with Joe and with Rick Gregor to talk about our ARCA process, to provide early input and feedback into that process. But one of my concerns is that we not set up and advantaged certain groups over other groups really early in the process. I would like to have us get together a draft process document, and then have an opportunity for comment from any of those entities that might be eligible into how we're planning on running the process. So, just from a standpoint of equity and access, I want to make sure that we are being as equitable and transparent as we can as we move those ARCA dollars forward. I was going to say, I was going to be at the Fair Foundation meeting tonight to JACIT presentation, but I'm not. So, I'm looking forward. I think that the one thing that I will be doing that I might want to alert you all to calendar-wise is that I will be attending the Freedom Fund Dinner for NAACP also on November 6th. Unfortunately, it's the same day as the Spirits Veterans Day Celebration. So, it's good that we can do more than one thing in the coming. So, that's it for me. Joe?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Several updates for you. First, just a reminder that Darren Nichols, our new Community Development Director, officially joins us full-time starting next Monday, November 1st. So, you'll be seeing him a lot more. He's been working part-time last week and part-time this week, but will be fully engaged starting next week, and he will be here in person. And then, over the Thanksgiving holiday, he'll be going back to Michigan and moving his family back at that point in time. So, just wanted to let you know that he has been beginning to get involved and will be more fully involved starting next week. Also, a quick update. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with one of the finalists for the Community Health Center Director. The hiring panel that has been walking through this process and Commissioner Wise can provide more details if the board has interest, but they have identified two finalists, and one of those finalists withdrew. So, right now, they're currently evaluating one finalist candidate. And the reason I mention that to all of you, because the CHC Board basically brings a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and then the Board of Commissioners has final approval authority. But I wanted you to know that that process was unfolding as we speak. Commissioner Wise, anything that you would like to add to what I just shared?
Not really, unless someone else has a question. I just want to make a comment that this process has been run in a very different way than the last search process. It's much less structured. There's a much less clear role for the county in this search process, and I'm disappointed. The Community Health Centers is a part of a county, as well as having an independent corps. All of the employees are county employees. The department is integrated with our... the CHC is integrated with our health department. So, whoever is hired as the executive director for the Community Health Centers plays a vital role in shaping how we work in our health services program overall. That way, we have outlined our joint operations in a brief MOU between our Board and CHC would indicate to me that we would have a more collaborative approach to this hiring. And I think it's really high times that we met as the Board of Commissioners with the CHC Board and started to address some of these relationship issues between the two entities. So, my consent.
And Van, I think that's really good feedback, and I feel like there was some challenges in this process. It got drawn out a lot further than I think what the original intention was, and that had presented some difficulties. I would love for you to share that feedback. I'm not sure what the appropriate way would be, but if for them to get that feedback, I think could be helpful for them.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion. I'll work on that.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll continue with my update if you're okay with that. Okay?
Please. But before you do, Joe, Pat, did you have a comment on that topic?
Commissioners, just to make you aware of several staff vacations coming up. Lilia Neville will be on a well-deserved vacation starting late this afternoon, and will be back on November 12th. So, if you have any issues or concerns, please direct those to Alyssa and or myself. Alyssa, for any of the communication issues or concerns, and then anything else regarding I administrative staff, you can direct to me. Also, Nick Kurtz will be taking also a well-deserved working vacation, and he'll still be available for important meetings relative to the Justice Systems Improvement Program. But I did want you to know that he'll be out of the office starting later this week for about 10 days. And then also, I will be going on vacation the Friday before Thanksgiving, and will be gone the week of Thanksgiving, back to see my newborn grandchild, which is exciting. And also, to let you know that we have crossed the major milestone. As you know, Governor Brown had issued a COVID vaccine mandate for healthcare workers. That applied to 259 of our employees. Out of those 259 of those employees, about, it looks like 14 people applied for either a religious and/or medical exemption and were approved for those exemptions. There are, it looks like, about three people that were not granted medical or religious exemptions and have received layoff notices. And but as you can tell, by far, the vast majority of our employees identified as healthcare workers were in compliance as of October 18th mandate. So, 242 being in direct compliance as of October 18th out of 259, I think, is really, really impressive. Let's see, also, if the Board hasn't already started receiving feedback or comments, just a heads up that our property tax notices or bills went out late last week, and so property owners within Benton County have started to receive their property tax notices. Also, to, just to make sure we're on the same page regarding the upcoming AOC conference, I believe all three Commissioners are attending that conference, as well as myself. As a result of that particular conference, the meeting, the Board meeting on November 16th, I believe that we've actually moved that up to start at 8:00 a.m. And so, just a reminder about that. And it was best that we could keep that on the same day and just alter the time. So, I know that that required different gyrations by different Commissioners to be able to make that happen, but just wanted to acknowledge that slight change in our meeting schedule. Also, you likely saw an invite for November 15th to have the, our Hurst representative, that's our liaison with the CHCs, to present to the CHC Board, as well as the Commissioners and myself and other key staff members, kind of the model. That's one or more models, I should say, about government structure of CHCs, and allow us to ask questions. And Carla Jones has been working on putting that together for a couple of months now. I do think, however, we have some conflicts that night, which I just wanted to bring up. I do think that we have a Fair Board retreat for Commissioner Malone and myself, and Commissioner Ozer, I believe you have a conflict as well.
Commissioner Wise and I both have conflicts. We're both scheduled to be at an event in Eugene for AOC that evening. So, it's not... It's just a lousy time.
We may have to see if we can push that back to December, or there may have to be a separate time for the Board of Commissioners and myself, but I'll talk with Patricia Conklin and Carla Jones to see what can be done to sort that out. But I did want to highlight that conflict when I saw it arise last night.
Thank you. In light of my comments earlier about our relationship with the CHC Board, I think that this is really a critical meeting, and all of us should be able to be there.
Understood, and I certainly think that is preferable, and so we'll strive to make that happen. Let's see, I did want to acknowledge that Nick just joined us. One of the topics that I wanted to discuss with the Board this morning is an idea that Commissioner Malone had last week, and Commissioner Malone presented this idea to me, and I'll have Commissioner Malone explain what his concept was. I did inform Commissioner Malone that I would check in with Nick as well as Lilia regarding his idea and see what our staff thought about applying this particular lens that Commissioner Malone's going to talk about to our site selection process for our Justice Systems Improvement Program. And the reason that I'm discussing this with the entire Board is, within our Leadership Policies document, it provides Commissioners to make requests of staff, and if those requests appear to take in excess of eight hours, then typically we'll bring that back to the entire governing body and say, you know, is this important to the entire Board? If it is, then staff will take that direction and accomplish it. And so, that's really why I'm before you this morning, is based on the idea that Commissioner Malone brought to my attention last week and the initial due diligence that I did on it. And Nick is present to share with you his kind of experience and views on this particular topic, and then I can color in the rest of the picture at the end. But Commissioner Malone, I would defer to you to share the idea that you presented to me, and then we can have Nick weigh in, and I can also share Lilia's comments as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's still a very well fleshed-out idea, but just wanting to bring in our 2040 Vision Statements, goals. This... The JACIT facilities are significant. They're going to be long-lasting. It seemed appropriate to me to at least attempt to see how potential sites would fit those goals. Obvious one is transportation and just how each of the potential sites would fit with our current transportation setup. And thinking about greenhouse gas emissions, and this is kind of a big part of Benton County's operation. And I have to keep reminding myself about the goals, and we get maybe too focused on the day-to-day and need to bring out the 2040 goals. We've made some, I think, modest progress in integrating the goals with our budget, but just not wanting to... Well, "integrating," I guess, is the key word. We have these goals, and how does this very significant project fit with our 2040 goals? And so, that's probably as far as I've gotten, and I started the conversation with Joe, and when he figures out which staff are impacted and some numbers, good ideas are a dime a dozen. What does it take to implement? And I appreciate getting the information back about it, that it's not an insignificant amount of staff time to work this into the JACIT project. So, I think that's what I have. Along with that, as far as, once we get further along, to make sure the community knows how various parts of the JACIT effort fit in with our goals. And I think that could be, you know, a significant part of our communication with our community.
Commissioner Malone, if I could just expand real quick, just to provide a little bit more context. There's a number of different concepts out there. When I say that, I'll just kind of review this framework. So, one piece of that framework is that we have the 2040 core values, and Nick went through an exercise about trying to apply those 2040 core values to the site selection process, and he'll speak about that in just a minute. So, we have those core values. We also have the five Board of Commissioners' goals, one of those goals being the Justice System Improvement Program. And then lastly, we have the 10 focus areas that the Board spoke to about two years ago. Those 10 focus areas really fit under kind of those core values for the 2040. And one of those 10 focus areas is in the area of transportation. And so, while there may not have necessarily been a directly a core value that references transportation, it is addressed within our focus area, one of our focus areas, which is called Mobility and Transportation. So, as we're talking about these concepts, we have the 2040 core values, the 10 focus areas, and then the five Board goals. And also, when I was working with Lilia on this particular topic, we would really primarily dedicate Sean McGuire to doing this evaluation, and Sean would have to be more informed by Nick, our project manager. And so, we're, you know, at this point estimating that the time involved would be at least about between 15 and 20 hours. It could be more ultimately. And I think the bottom line, in order for anything to be beneficial to the Board at this stage of the game, you know, we would really need to have this work done within the next, you know, three weeks in order for the Board to take that into consideration as part of your site selection decisions. So, with that being said, I would like to just ask Nick to jump in, and he put some initial thought and effort into this. thought and effort into this, and I'd like him to share that for the Board's consideration.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. Is Commissioner White still with us? Didn't want to...
I believe she is. I think she's just off camera.
Okay.
Nancy, are you there? She may have needed to step away briefly.
Okay.
I think Joe, yeah.
Go ahead.
I think Joe, you highlighted my biggest concern, and that is, you know, what are we, what criteria, what are we using as criteria? Is it the focus areas or is it the core values? And if we could determine that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so I gave this a little bit of thought, and I have to say, when Joe mentioned it to me, I was intrigued. I did, however, end up writing to Joe and Lilia and say I was struggling to get traction. And there were kind of two points that I raised, which doesn't mean this still isn't a good idea, but one is, as I looked at the core values, and I was focusing on the core values and 2040 as a whole, no, it's really kind of a macro-oriented aspirational program. And I was having trouble aligning that with not just site selection, but site selection between two or three of the best properties. So there's this, you know, macro level program, which JSEF does appear in four of our department goals at a high level. But now we're trying to somehow apply it to a very, very precise decision that has already been vetted to the best of the best, essentially. So I was having a little bit of trouble in that regard. The other point I made is, you know, relative to objectivity, a lot of these core values relative to site selection, I think, depend on who you ask. And that's not to say that Sean can't be impartial, but I think we're finding out that it does depend on who you ask. And so I was having trouble from that perspective as well. You know, I do think, in hindsight, I think this may have been something we could have done at the very outset of site selection. I do think we have, by our own nature, applied some of the tenants of 2040. And for instance, we were, you were mentioning mobility, you know, one of our final selection criteria is, you know, proximity to multimodal paths. And that is all about mobility to and from the proposed justice system. We're also going to, we're also going to face the transportation decision relative to the new courthouse sometime down the road. And I think, you know, by our nature, we're going to probably take into account, okay, what are the greenhouse gas impacts if the new courthouse is separate from Sheriff's Office and Correctional Facility? So I think some of these will naturally work their way into the decision process. But I am having trouble, you know, applying the core values with the exception of one. And this is one that, you know, I feel very strongly about. I'm glad that Joe was on with us, and I don't see him now. But he is, okay, good. I do think relative to equitability, that this is a question we need to ask and face relative to site selection. It's not only 2040 goal, it's a JSEF goal. And, you know, we are essentially, you know, walking into a very classic situation that is documented with research, where we have, you know, a vocal minority of highly educated people with resources, you know, mounting in opposition to a proposed site that's in proximity to them, and potentially, you know, resulting in us looking at a different site, maybe at a much higher cost to the county. And so, you know, I have real concerns that we're going to have to answer that question for ourselves as well as the people of the county. And so that's the one aspect of 2040 that I think we do need to be cognizant of, and we do need to be informed on it as we make our site selection decision. Thank you. That's all I have to share.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share Lilia's comments as well. I think they pretty much align with what Nick was sharing, and that, thinking that utilizing the core values, which are aspirational, more conceptual, truth, theoretical, were the words that she used, and trying to apply them to more of a tactical decision at this point makes it somewhat difficult. And, you know, really, the question before the Board today is, you know, do you have a desire for us to move forward with work on this particular topic? And if you want us to apply a different lens to the site selection process, what lens are we applying? Are we applying the 2040 core values or the 10 focus areas and/or both? And, you know, is the Board supportive of staff spending, you know, 15 to 20 hours worth of our time in the next three weeks to do this? And certainly, if the Board desires it, we will make it happen. But once again, just following our Leadership Policy Document and the provisions in there when it comes to the use of staff time and Commissioner's request.
I would love to jump in. My sense personally is that Nick and Lilia are right on in the sense that these are aspirational values and vision statements for the focus areas, whereas we're taking a very granular decision. And inevitably, given that mismatch, the valuation that would be made using these criteria would be pretty darn subjective. And I am not very comfortable with asking staff to make those kinds of subjective valuations. I think those rest with us. And I think that if we, as Commissioners, want to use these values and focus area vision statements as criteria when we make our site decisions, that's great. That's where, that's where that decision should lie. So it really is up to us to filter our site decision making through this lens. That said, when we get ready, after we've thought of the site and we're looking at site-specific decision making, I think that looking at the values again will be helpful to make sure that we balance out our interests in safety and livable community and community resilience and all of those things, help in all actions, that we're balancing them in whatever plan we put together for those facilities on a specific site. That might be really helpful. So I think that we need to pull out this lens again as we develop specific site goals. So I don't think that I would invest the time right now, staff time, to do this work. But I think that it's a really important reminder, Pat, to all of us to be using these values as we make our own decisions.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea to consider decisions through many different lenses and have a balance there. But when I think of, you know, 15 to 20 hours of staff time, and I view staff time as a resource, and we have to manage our resources wisely, it comes down to priorities for me. What is, what are the biggest priorities? What work do we have to get done first? What's the most important stuff? We still have plenty of work to do in this process. But I really like the idea, and I am happy to, just as myself, as my own decision-making person, sit down and, you know, run through these lists and check off kind of how I think that they are balanced and how they contribute. So while I think it's a great idea, I just have, balancing that with the staff time, I guess, is not penciling out for me. But Pat, I really appreciate you thinking about this in these terms. I mean, it shows that you have an eye towards all, you know, our really big goals for the county, so thank you.
You are welcome. And I think that I agree with what, if there was more time and as far as site selection, I could see, I think we have, we would have went down to the Z-Six criteria, and I could see adding this as another one. But I don't, I think we can formally, as Commissioners, do that on our own. When I thought of this not too long ago, I was thinking, geez, is this, is this a stick in the spokes, or is this a wonderful idea? And I honestly wasn't sure, which is, I passed it along as soon as it popped into my head. But I can see the, probably the main value in this exercise is for site selection and using this, using these goals to communicate to the community that we're following the goals that we've set out and, you know, one, two, and three, how the goals fit with JSEF program. So I was hoping it would be a little bit simpler, but I'm fine with acknowledging the goals as we go forward, and then maybe after the first of the year, get serious about as part of the communication piece, just how these goals and the JSEF project are in alignment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I think I have the direction, and I've heard that we will not pursue this formally relative to having staff take a view of it and run through that evaluation. But it sounds like each Commissioner will keep the 2040 core values as well as the 10 focus areas in mind as you're evaluating the various sites that you'll be making decisions on in the next 30 to 45 days.
Since we're talking about this, can I pull out my stick and see if I can put it in spokes, too? One issue that we have heard over and over that I think is tripping people up is this idea of what we are going to be doing for adults in custody when they get released. And I feel like we have all said, oh, we will figure out some kind of solution, you know, we're committed to that. And that's great, but what's missing for people, I think, is, you know, the next step, like what is that, what are some examples? So I'm just wondering, what would it take for us to come up with just a couple ideas, you know, nothing set in stone, no promises, but just something that we can point to that says, you know, these are some options, these are what other communities do, you know, depending on where we choose, maybe we can do some of these.
Actually, I think we already have a couple of those concepts between Nick and Sheriff Van Arsdale, so I'll look to them to address your question, Commissioner.
I would like to follow up on that and just say that one of the things that would be really, really helpful, especially now that we have received so much constituent mail on this topic, is to go through all of the really thoughtful comments that many of our community members have made, and put together a robust frequently asked questions list for our website. It would be extremely helpful for me as I answer constituent mail. And it would be great to have a single answer, other than an answer that was filtered through different people and may sound different coming from different people, just for consistency's sake. So I would, I know that's a lot of work, Alyssa, but it's something that we really need.
She's already on it.
Yes, we are reviewing a frequently asked questions document that we prepared a few months ago. We are fleshing it out and building more questions and are hoping to have it to Nick early next week for review and finalization.
Yeah, we're, Alyssa and I spoke on, I think it was Monday, we're in good shape with our budget-toe contract relative to budget, and this made sense for Julie to help us out, and so she's been working on this in the background with Alyssa, so should have something soon.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Commissioner White, Sheriff Van Arsdale and I have spoken about this and have batted around some concepts. I'll say, you know, we haven't taken this to the finish line in terms of planning, and my recollection is that the sheriff indicated in one of our meetings that, you know, ultimately an adult in custody has a right to leave the facility by his or her means or choice, and I'll ask the sheriff to confirm that here. But as well, you know, we have talked about, you know, the Indian event that the courthouse is, say, downtown, and our correctional facility is on a suburban site, that we could piggyback the use of transports for court appearances to provide transportation for adults in custody who are released to get downtown. We've also talked about warm handoffs and the potential for adults on release to have need to go to the crisis center, and we could provide that transportation. Of course, there is public transit, which we know we want to extend, not just for adults on release, but, you know, to and from for workers. I even kicked around, I brought up the idea of bicycles with the sheriff, and just really thinking out of the box, kind of brainstorming, and sheriff said, oh, yeah, in Baker County, we have bikes. And I'll let the sheriff talk about that. But I think we have, you know, started thinking about what are the possibilities? You know, I am aware that in, there are counties, at least DLR has shared this with me, that they essentially, this is up in Washington, they, the correctional facility says, we will give you a ride downtown if you don't have one. Now, I don't know that if that means they have to accept the ride or if it's on their own recognizance, but Sheriff, let me invite you here to jump in as well.
Well, I think just the one thing to keep in mind, and you touched on this first thing, Nick, is we can offer everything under the sun, they can tell us no and walk away. And at that point, we have to honor that request. So that's just something that we do have to take into consideration. With regards to what it looks like, right now, we released them downtown. We don't do anything other than release them. And it's not a mass release, you know, it's just one here, one there, it's not a significant number of people who needs to one die. We don't know what it's going to look like, we don't know what the resource center is going to look like, we don't know what the facility is going to be. So to touch on that, we don't know if they, you know, have arranged rides or if it's pro-probation, or if there's a soft handoff to the crisis center through the V.O., or, I mean, it's just, there's so many options, and right now, there's no options. So anything we come up with is going to be a new concept, and I welcome it. So I think as a group and with the community and their feedback, we'll come up with some pretty, pretty good solutions, I think, to wherever we build this. Even if we actually build this site downtown, we may have recognized some things in this process and go, hey, we need to change the way we're doing business, that's the whole point of this. So I think regardless of where we go and how we proceed, there's going to be pluses, and there's going to be a lot of positive takeaways. and there's going to be a lot of positive takeaways.
Can I, I mean, I'll just say, I, you know, me personally, I'm not concerned about adults in custody being released necessarily, but since it is a concern in the community that I think people want to have addressed, that's where my thoughts are coming from. So is there, and like I said, I don't think it has to be set in stone, you know, we're not making, we're not making specific promises that this is exactly how it's going to go, but just some ideas on a list. Do we, and what would a timeline be for that? Would that be sooner? Would that be later? I mean, I know I've heard some talk about, oh, that would come later with development, but at this point, I think it really, just having some ideas sooner than later would be helpful.
Mike, I'm certainly happy to codify the ideas and proposals and the possibilities, and within the, you know, boundaries of the law as well. And, you know, in terms of timing, Commissioner, I think it would depend whether the, I think it would depend whether the Board of Commissioners is wanting changes currently, or concomitant with a new facility. I mean, the reality is, we have probably four to five years to figure this out, before anything's going to change in our world. And so, you know, I would need direction in terms of what the expectation is. I definitely understand and hear the concern, and it's on my list. It's something that I want to look at operationally, you know, from an expense standpoint with our CFO, as we ponder some of these ideas. So, but I'm happy to codify it and, you know, present a shortlist of ideas.
Pat?
Yeah. I think developing the potential ideas is good, but even better, I think, would be pilot programs to, with the current system. I think that gives us more credibility. And as this subject was batted around, I was remembering the last boat, and the site was full, and a lot of the same comments, that there would be bad people wandering around less than a mile from a high school. And so, this is one of the main themes for, I don't want the correctional facility anywhere close to where I live, or go to school, or work, or. So I think it is important to have a list of potential solutions, and as practical, let's see about implementing, or getting close, anyway, if that's at all practical. Sheriff, and I guess you get to weigh in and say, well, it's not a problem, so why are we, if it's not a problem, why are we solving, trying to solve it? But it definitely is, you know, it is a theme, especially concerning the site.
Commissioner Wise?
I just want to clarify a statement that I think maybe came off the wrong way. I said that I'm not concerned about adults in custody being released. I'm not concerned about them currently being released, but depending on where we, you know, build this further away from the downtown core, that is a concern that I share. And, you know, in order for me to, you know, I have to stand up and put my stamp of approval on this. I have to go to the voters and ask for more of their hard-earned money to support this. So I have, this is something I have to feel good about, you know, I have to feel like we're doing the right thing, the best thing. And so for me, this is one of those things that will help me feel like I am making the best decision. When people ask Nancy Wise, what is going to happen with this, I can say, here are some, here's an answer for that. Here's some possibilities. You know, I don't want to say to people, gee, I don't know, we're going to try our best, win the time count.
Commissioner, a couple of options for us to consider is, you know, one is, we're developing the frequently asked questions. This really should be, we should have an answer to this as part of the frequently asked questions. And while we may not be able to specifically state that we're going to do X, Y, or Z, I think in that frequently asked question, we can identify what some possibilities are that are being considered. So number one, maybe that would be helpful. Number two, depending on what type of information you need relative to the site selection process, you know, that's what I would really zoom in on right now. And so I'm looking to you as to, you know, having this information vetted right now, is that important to your decision-making process over the next 30 to 45 or 60 days? And if so, then we need to be aware of that in order for us to try to rise to the occasion to meet your request.
Yes. When I make my decision, I need to go through a list of all of the objections, and I need to state, you know, if I think the objection is, you know, able to be overcome or not. So yes, I feel like that's information that I need. And I do really appreciate, Nick and Sheriff, that you guys have already been working on this, so thank you.
I really like the idea of addressing it through frequently asked questions, because it is very frequently asked question. And I would say, however, that almost any site that we're contemplating, the solution will be very similar. It doesn't matter very much whether it's southwest, you know, anything else. And so I think that part of what I've been telling people also, is that this is really something that we will be working with neighbors on, once we choose a site, and we will work with the community to make sure that we have an option that works, both for adults in custody that are emerging back into the community, and for us operationally, and for the safety and livability of the neighborhood. So there's only so much we can do in advance of choosing a site. But, so I just, careful about what we're promising. I also liked the idea of what you were saying, Sheriff, about taking a look at our practice now. We need to perhaps do a little bit of a survey and determine where people go once we release them, and get a sense for what some of those traffic patterns might look like if we're at an alternate site. But it would be useful information to have.
Yeah, I guess the one question I have relative to taking action on this is, where is the right place for adults in custody to go on release? The sentiments from the community seem to be downtown, but I don't know how people downtown feel about that. I don't know how the business owners feel about that. I don't know how people that visit the library feel about that, or the restaurants. I don't know that our current situation is really the right solution, even though the people that we've heard from in the suburban areas seem to feel that it is. So I don't ask this question to be, I'm thinking, I ask it very heartfelt, what is the right place? And, you know, so it's a big question.
It is a big question, and we have to remember that these adults in custody are members of the community. They're members of the community before they go in to stay in jail or a correctional facility. They're members of the community when they come out. There's someone, sister, brother, mother, cousin, uncle, you know, they are, they're part of the fabric. So that's something we just have to remember. I see that, I think both the sheriff and Johan may have something that they would like to say at this point.
I was just going to echo what you just said, Dan, about the need to focus on the well, and we should be asking them, what are they wanting, what are they needing when they are released, so that we can really get a better idea of what's the best way to support them as they're going through it. So anyone who's currently in custody or has been in custody before, it'd be good to focus on getting their feedback as well, and seeing how we can center their voices, since everyone's going to be impacted by this, just as much as those in the community as well. And I think that's something that's pretty common, is we do not focus on people who are incarcerated and not hearing their voices, and I see that as a real lead throughout the country. So I think it's something that, as my view as the community coordinator, that we really need to be considering that as we do this work.
So commissioners, I'd just like to acknowledge that we've gone far afield from the topic that I originally was updating the board on. And so I would like to kind of bring this back around and ask the board to provide staff direction, so that we can get to work on whatever that direction is. And then we also have two executive sessions still as part of our meeting this morning.
So what I've heard so far is that we don't feel that we need to do a deep dive into 2040 values and focus areas with respect to site selection, that we will do that on our own, as we come to our own conclusions about the merits for sites. But that we definitely want to keep that in mind as we move forward into the next phase after we've selected a site. And with this recent discussion, I think our frequently asked questions is going to take us a long ways toward answering some of what we need as we talk to constituents. But it won't answer all questions, because many of them can't be answered until we have a site, until we know what we're doing. And we can work on developing those plans with community members. But I do believe that it's an excellent idea to involve voices of those that have been in custody or emerging from custody, and to examine how our system is currently working.
That's pretty much what I heard. I just want to clarify, because that was kind of broad, are we going to add to our frequently asked questions stuff about it may be released, or excuse me, adults in custody?
It is one of those frequently asked questions. So yes, it is one of those that we need to address in those, I think, use.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate that, and I'm sorry for taking us off course, but I feel good about that conversation we just had, so thank you.
Commissioner Wise, is that helpful to achieve your goal, if we have a frequently asked question, and as part of that question, we offer up what some of the possibilities are that are being considered?
Yes. I just need to know how to answer people's questions, rather than coming up with my own answers, so.
Agreed. Understood. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, that really ends my update for today.
Thank you. And I'm just, in hindsight, thinking that we perhaps should have put the Justice Assistance and Movement Program on the agenda formally, because we did spend significant time on this topic, but not specifically site selection. It was a great conversation. Thank you, Commissioner Malone and Commissioner Wise, for bringing up those topics, and to all of you who participated. At this point, we are going to go into executive session under, or as 192.6602D, as in David, for labor relations. We will then flow immediately from that into our second executive session for real estate matters, under 192.6602E, as in Edward. So at this point, we will take a five-minute break, so that we can clear the room and move forward.
Okay. And Joe, you'll text me when they're ready? Thanks.
Yes, I will, Nick. Thank you.